Where are you going to be working next week? Okay, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Cuyahoga County Council Committee, the whole, for Tuesday, March 19, 2013. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Calling the roll, Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Here.
Mr. Germana.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schron. Ms. Conwell.
Here.
And Ms. Conley.
Here.
Of course.
I anticipate that Ms. Simon will be here, but I would like to entertain a motion to mark the absence of Mr. Schron as excused. Moved by Mr. Miller and seconded by Mr. Germana. Any discussion? All who are in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, we mark Mr. Schron as excused. Any public comment related to the agenda?
There is none, Madam Chair.
All right, and item four, would you read item 4A?
Motion number 2013-0009, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of Francis X. Bova upon his taking the oath of office as the sheriff of Cuyahoga County and declaring the necessity that this motion become immediately effective.
Good afternoon, Sheriff Bova.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman.
For ladies and gentlemen of the council, there are a number of statutory requirements for the office of sheriff. We have reviewed those, and I believe the law department has also reviewed them, and rather than make all the multiple copies, some of which contain personal information, Ms. Schotzer has a complete packet of all of the qualifications. If anyone wants to review those, they are available. At this time, Sheriff Bova, I'd like to give you an opportunity to speak and tell us about your qualifications. We do have, I still have this question, you know, this great bit of Ohio trivia is the only person that can arrest a sheriff is the coroner. Now, we don't technically have a coroner anymore, we have a medical examiner, so I guess the medical examiner can come out and arrest you, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. You may proceed.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Frank Bova. I am a third-generation police officer. My grandfather became a Cleveland police officer in 1927 and my father in 1957. My father would probably be sitting here today, but he's in the final stages of Parkinson's and is not doing well at the moment. I am married with six grown children. I coach baseball and I referee basketball on the side, and we do have two family pets. I became a Cleveland police officer in 1985, and my last stop in Cleveland was the officer in charge of the vice and strike force units in the old 6th District. In 2000, I became chief of police in Warrensville Heights and proudly served the citizens there until 2010. As chief, we started many projects which were very successful. One I am extremely proud of is the Senior Police Academy, which as of today has over 150 graduates that now assist the city of Warrensville in community events. We also started a neighborhood watch program, and within the actual police department, we changed the structure and discipline process and made the officers more responsive to the citizens that they served. In 2009, I became the interim sheriff and immediately set out to calm down and redirect the sheriff's office at that time in a positive and open direction. I put in place clear and precise rules and corrected a few glaring wrongs. I then prepared the office for the new direction it was going. I came back to the sheriff's office in 2010 in charge of the Detective Bureau Sex Crimes Unit, the SWAT team, the warrant team, essentially all non-uniformed personnel. These offices function quietly and efficiently. The deputies who work with me handle many investigations with professionalism and, more importantly, the integrity it takes to have complete and thorough investigations. Our sheriff's offices in Cuyahoga County is unique. We are not a classical first responder, as in other counties. We supplement and assist our law enforcement partners along with other duties. Since becoming interim sheriff again on February 1st of this year, I have focused on a few initiatives, one being the courthouse. As we sit here today, we now have three deputies assigned to each court tower floor, and over 40 cameras have been ordered with stimulus monies. This will modernize and enhance the security of the court tower. I have also begun to modernize the antiquated discipline procedures within the sheriff's office. This will help with fairer and more uniformed discipline across the board. I have also begun to focus on the jail to make sure we continue to have a safe and efficient operation and to focus on the issues of prisoner board and care and prisoner population to assist in cutting costs. Deputies in Cuyahoga County are multi-talented. When the county executive reached out to the cities with the vision of regional cooperation, the new IMPAC unit was born. It opened a whole new avenue of service. As the only local agency with jurisdiction throughout the county, this allowed cities to enhance their police agencies with deputies who would complement their police forces for special events and/or problems in their cities. I have also met with our federal, state, and local law enforcement partners, and I can tell you as I sit here now, our partnerships have never been stronger. We are in a unique place in America where federal, state, county, and local police agencies and the Attorney General's office all get along and have the same common goals: to eliminate corruption and control crime. If confirmed by council, I will be inheriting many projects already underway. The prisoner project with Cleveland will be introducing Cleveland prisoners directly into our jail population. Construction has already begun to help with the flow of the prisoners. The kitchen project is a new jail kitchen which will serve our jail population. This construction is also underway. The central booking project, although not started, is in the planning stages. The theory for this is good. Having all entities present during the booking process, I believe, is a good idea. We will be working on that as we go along. We are presently working hand-in-hand with our HR department to fill vacant positions. When we reach full complement, this will help control overtime costs and will help, I will, from this point forward, if confirmed, monitor all projects to make sure they stay within budget. And finally, if I am confirmed, you will be getting a person not afraid to make decisions and with integrity and honesty to do what is right for the efficiency of our organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Bova. If you want to start, questions? Mr. Gallagher?
Welcome, Sheriff. The only problem I've ever had with a Bova was when St. Clement played O.L.A. And then after that, I didn't have problems because we usually always won, so. And I had very, very fond memories of your father. My best to him.
Thank you.
I don't, in specific, have any questions, but the short period of time that I have worked with you on the safety committee, I've been greatly impressed and look forward to working further with you these next few years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right, questions? Mr. Greenspan?
Great, thank you. A few weeks ago, we were alerted to an issue with the concealed carry scenario at Parma. Can you explain the situation and how you proactively address that to resolve it?
The situation we have right now, because of several potential law changes, carrying concealed permits requests are going through the roof. And with that, our office, in the Parma office, received so many calls that our personnel could not keep up with the answering back within our 24-hour period. It was brought to my attention that a gentleman that had contacted you was not happy with that. I personally contacted him, assured him that we are addressing it. I have addressed it. We are making a concerted effort to make sure we call everyone back and get them their appointments as soon as possible. And the gentleman unfortunately got a CCW in another county, but he's assured me that he'll come back here next time.
Great, and that was an example of, or an opportunity where the county was actually losing money, because this is a revenue-generating activity for us whereby now the issue, you've successfully addressed the issue insofar as addressing the staffing needs to ensure that the resources are available to service the needs of the county, but at the same time in an environment where the county is, will be receiving funds as a result of those activities. Because we were losing a significant amount of permits to the surrounding counties, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's because of the backlog.
All right, Mr. Miller?
Thanks, Madam President, and to the sheriff, congratulations on your appointment and recommendation. And my question is as to how many vacancies there are for deputies and how long, on average, is it currently taking to fill a vacancy? This is an area that's been a serious problem in the past, and I want to know where we're at on that.
Councilman, presently, we have 140 deputies who are in the process of hiring 21 more. Eight of those, I'm proud to say, will be military veterans because of a grant we got. We are working hand-in-hand with HR, and we have sped up the process at our end and HR's end, so probably we're looking at about six weeks due to background checks and everything else.
So, Madam President, Sheriff, are you saying that from the time a position is posted until hiring that you can fill a vacancy in six weeks?
That is our goal, six weeks, that's correct.
That would be considerably better than most others are doing. Well, we'd like to, you to get back to us in a couple months and let us know whether you're actually accomplishing that. That would be very good work if you can do that.
Councilman, I'd like to announce that we just hired three deputies as of this past Monday, yesterday.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I piggyback on that question? Can you expand that onto correction officers? And then also a separate question as to the value you believe the IMPAC units are having in our county, and would it be your recommendation at some point to expand that program?
Yes, first of all, we have 503 corrections offers presently. We're in the process of hiring 30 more. 12 are ready to be hired as we speak. They'll be going to class in the next week or so. As far as the IMPAC unit is concerned, the IMPAC unit is making great strides. Several cities are a little bit hesitant to use our services just for the simple fact that they have to explain to their council, you know, why can't we handle it ourselves? The cities that have taken advantage of it, we have eliminated burglary problems for them, speeder problems, whatever they need, A to Z. So, it's working. I would love to, within the next year, expand even have an east-side IMPAC unit and a west-side IMPAC unit. That would be fantastic.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
Something that came before us, actually, when we first came on. The courts had concerns about getting the prisoners from the jail up to the courtrooms. Have we gotten better at that, or is that still a problem?
I wouldn't consider it a problem, but we are getting better at it just for a simple fact, now that we have three deputies on a floor, which just started. We also are working with the courts to cut back on prisoner visitation with their attorneys. Sometimes the prisoners are brought upstairs, not necessarily for court proceedings, but to visit with their attorneys. So, the courts, in conjunction with myself, are working on cutting that back, which will help bringing up the necessary prisoners instead of non-necessary prisoners.
Okay, thank you.
So, to compensate for that, will you have it available where the lawyers can meet with their clients?
I'm sorry.
To compensate for that, if they're going to bring them upstairs to talk to their lawyers, will there be an equal opportunity in the jail for the lawyers to meet with them?
Absolutely.
Because I've heard lawyers complain about that.
Well, we've set up a specific area in times that if an attorney wants to see their client, we'll make arrangements in the jail.
Okay, and I have a question about the lag time between the time that the judge sentences the person and then the time they actually are transferred to state jurisdiction for incarceration, because it may be only a day or two for each one, but if you add up those day or two or three, over, you know, over a year, that's a lot of jail days. So, have we done anything about improving that, that lag time?
As I'm sitting here, I have not, but I will review that.
Because, you know, I'm told that, you know, you're sentenced by the county police court judge to the state facility, and you may sit a week here before you're actually shipped to some point south. And as I said, over the course of a year, that's a lot of days that adds up.
You're correct, Madam President, and all I can say is, I'll have to review that with the, I don't know if it's a paperwork delay.
And I think some of it is a problem with, not a problem, but you have to be working out with the clerk, so that the clerk gets the papers to the judge, to the state, so that the transfer can be done as quickly as possible.
I will look into that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Rogers and then Mr. Jones?
Great, thank you. I had a follow-up on the concealed carry, because I received a couple phone calls on that as well. And so, it's my understanding that if you wanted a concealed carry, you have to go to a Parma office?
That's correct.
Is there any consideration of doing perhaps an east-side/west-side, or?
There has been discussion about that, but we haven't done it yet, but that would make perfect sense.
Is the backlog that we were encountering was because of a lack of adequate staff to...
Well, we had adequate staff until all of a sudden the rush on the guns, and then all of a sudden, several people that probably normally wouldn't have got gun permits decided to get gun permits, and we went from maybe 40 or 50 to 300.
I was told that there's something in the process where they have to go to the Parma office, and then they also have to come downtown for something else. Is that, is that the case, or?
I'm not aware of that. I thought everything was done in Parma.
So, everything should be done in that one office?
Everything should be done in Parma. The offices used to be down here, but we moved everything, the whole operation out to Parma.
Great, thank you. The IMPAC units, you might mention that some municipalities are hesitant to use them. Are some municipalities using them more? How often can you request an IMPAC unit, and how long do they remain in the municipality, and how soon before a municipality can call back and say, we want you guys to come out again?
The officer in charge of the IMPAC unit has a list at city's request. He tells them, well, first of all, he prioritizes, if there's robberies, active robberies going on, then they'll move up on the list instead of a traffic detail. So, he prioritizes. They can request again, they will be put back on the list, but hopefully, we're out there on the average of two weeks in the cities, and hopefully, we can solve the problem.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam President, and my question revolves around the IMPAC unit as well. Again, based on your statement about the hesitancy of the police and the locally elected officials, how many communities have you, of the 59, have you actually gone into with our IMPAC unit?
I believe we're up to 20, sir.
20?
Yes.
Okay. In particular, cities of Garfield Heights and Maple Heights, have they had the opportunity to take advantage of this service?
Yes, we have assisted Maple Heights. They had a rampant crime spree, and we assisted on arresting a gentleman that was robbing people with a weapon.
Which city was that?
Maple Heights.
Maple Heights, okay. It just looks like an area where we, as council, may be able to step in and help move relations a little, and if that is a concern, the police, maybe not getting, I don't want to use the wrong word, but the right perception of this service, it might be an area where we can help, so maybe we can have further dialogue about this.
Thank you, we will. If confirmed, I will be going out to the chiefs, I used to be on the chiefs' board myself. I'm familiar with the majority of the chiefs in the county and let them know that the services were here to help. 10 free policemen in your city or deputies, in our case, is a bonus. That should be something we shy away from.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Conwell?
Yes, Madam Chair, to Mr. Bova, in light of the current events involving police shootings, do we have a deadly force policy?
Yes, we do.
And could you make that available to me or to council?
I will make it available to all the council.
Thank you.
Mr. Brady?
On the IMPAC units, you said that 20 communities have taken advantage of it. Could you provide the council with a list of those 20 communities?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments? Ordinarily, we would reserve public comment till the end of the agenda, but I think it'd be more appropriate if we have someone that has public comment on the individual candidates to offer them now. So, do you have any closing statements that you'd like to make?
No, I do not. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Has anyone signed in for public comment?
No, Madam Chair.
Is there anyone that wanted to offer public comment about Sheriff Bova? Judge first, and then...
I think it's an excellent choice.
Well, why don't you come up? And thank you, make your step down.
Hello, obviously, I'm here on behalf of the, to make comment on the clerk, but I have known Frank Bova for a few decades and knew his father, and he is a fine man. I think he's going to do an excellent job. He understands the workings of the jail here, and we've already seen an improvement in our relationship with the sheriff, so looking forward to working with him.
Okay, and you'll be back again in a couple minutes?
Yes, I will.
Okay. And Mr. McGentee, Judge McGentee?
Good afternoon, Your Honor. Good afternoon, Council. I would enjoy the opportunity to speak on behalf of Sheriff Bova. When then Administrative Judge Nancy McDonald was tasked by the commissioners to find an interim replacement for the Sheriff McFall when he left in disgrace, we were looking for a sheriff who was, we were looking for an interim who would come for two or three months, change the shape of the sheriff's office, and someone who could pledge not to run, who wasn't going to be a political animal, but yet do the job that desperately needed in the sheriff's office was in disarray. And I was tasked by Judge McDonald, who was tasked by the commissioners, to make that appointment, and I had recommended Chief Frank Bova, who was in chief of Warrensville Heights Police, because he was the best chief in the county, in my opinion, at the time, and the most honest and effective man I knew to handle the job. And he came in, he did a tremendous job in those several months, and, you know, he was quite a change from the prior sheriff. He came in in uniform, came in every day at 7:00 a.m., worked a full day, quite a startling change from the prior sheriff, and up and around, fixed all that needed to be repaired in these various units, and put the Detective Bureau back into a first-class operation, and kept the better people, improved on personnel, and made a great deal of changes. I've known the sheriff since he was a high school football player, of course, at a great institution, St. Ed's, and I was coaching.
Were you the coach, or?
I was coaching by chance, and I was a little too old to be playing by then, of course, way too old. But Frank was a heck of a player, and we went to him in clutch situations, played in the 1975 national state championship, played a tremendous game. I wish we gave him the ball a few more times. That was coaching errors, we lost that game by two points, not player error. He was a tremendous athlete, a man of integrity, and I don't think the people of Cuyahoga County could do better than Sheriff Frank Bova. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for comments on Sheriff Bova? Mr. Boyle?
Thank you, Madam President, and members of council. On behalf of Executive Fitzgerald, I would concur with the comments made by, not just by the members of the council, but also by the judges, as their comments. I truly don't think that there's anybody more, better suited to this position than Frank Bova, and the comments that he led off with about his family, I think, are appropriate for this conversation. And kind of reviewing some of the background on Mr. Bova, we were a little surprised to see the Bova name crop up in the corruption investigation transcripts and the immediate sense of urgency about, gosh, maybe we don't know the real Frank Bova. In fact, quite the opposite, the commentary in Frank, it was Frank Russo's testimony, if I'm not mistaken, and Frank Russo's testimony was that Frank Bova's father, who was then an employee in the weights and measures department, upon, I assume Frank Russo trying to make some corrupt inroads into that department, was stifled by Frank's father because he would not play ball with the corrupt enterprises that Frank Russo had. And I think that that really is, quite frankly, is a telling commentary about not just who Frank Bova is, but also the family that he comes from. And not just that he's a third-generation police officer, but he's also an honest, decent human being, and the comments from the judges, I think, really say it all. And quite frankly, on behalf of Executive Fitzgerald, I'm glad that he's willing to serve this county again.
Thank you. And Ms. Conwell?
This is for Mr. Bova. Madam Chair, to Mr. Frank Bova, if the sheriff's office is, the sheriff position is decided by the county Charter Review Commission to have it a separate office, to be an elected position again, how do you feel about that?
You know, I'll reserve comment on that. Right now, I'm under the auspices of an appointed position, and if you offer me the respect, I prefer not to comment on that.
Okay, but you are thinking about...
I'm not really a political person, so if it did become an elected position, I would have to talk that over with my family.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments? Mr. Germana?
Madam Chairman, I was not going to comment until Councilwoman Conwell came up with that, because I was actually thinking the same question, because I've heard people say that, the suggestion that the sheriff should be in an elected position, and quite frankly, I'm going to speak in opposition to that, because I think the qualities that you bring forward, your history and everything about being a professional police officer, might not be the same qualities you need in an elected. Not a person of your caliber would be willing to go out and try to win Cuyahoga County over on being a sheriff, so I'm very much in favor of your appointment, permanent appointment, and so I just thought I'd make that comment. Councilwoman Conwell, it was the same question I was thinking myself.
Mr. Brady?
This has nothing to do with this proceeding, but it's kind of veered into a different area. I just want to defend democracy a little bit, because I believe that those of us who do run for office can be quite qualified and still have the incentive to run for public office. I had thought, when this was first on the ballot, that the sheriff should be elected, and I think in most other charter counties, that's still the case. But I have, by observation of the last two years, come to a conclusion that it's not necessary to elect the sheriff. I do, however, think that, since we're such into a deep philosophical discussion here, that the sheriff should be appointed for a set amount of time and should have a sort of a firewall and a certain independence from the county executive, but we'll see how that turns out anyway. We'll look forward to working with you, and I certainly support your nomination.
Thank you, Councilman.
I just want to concur with Councilman Brady on this point. I mean, you are a man of great integrity, and I respect that integrity, but we have to prepare for the future, and we don't know what, who the county executive will be and who the appointee will be. So, I believe that the position of the sheriff must be an independent office where you stand your own ground, and you can always make your decision. You don't have to worry about somebody in the county executive's office discharging you. So, I believe that you are a man of great integrity, that that would not happen, and I certainly would not believe that of Mr. Fitzgerald, but we always have to look for the future. So, I would strongly support a, some man or charter amendment or some thing that we would appoint the sheriff for some specific amount of time, and the person could only be removed by some council hearing or some other proceeding. be removed by some council hearing or some other proceeding. So we are, we are off our topic, but, all right. Any other comments, questions? If not, we will entertain a motion to move this item to the regular agenda and for passage under suspension of the rules, because we do have the 30-day time limit, which is another, if we're talking about charter items, council is limited to 30 days for these appointments. And so, in looking to the future, we are hoping that the Charter Review Commission would consider giving us a little bit more time, because sometimes a appointee may be out of the jurisdiction or unavailable, and council doesn't always meet. We only meet twice a month, so we actually had to have this special meeting today so that we could come within the 30 days. But anyway.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to refer this nomination with a recommendation for approval to the full council for consideration under second reading suspension.
My second.
Seconded by Mr. Jones. All right, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, ayes have, and this item will be on the agenda for next Tuesday.
Thank you, counsel.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 0010, Mr. Parks. You want to read that item, please?
Motion number 2013 0010, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of Mark A. Parks Jr. upon his taking the oath of office as the treasurer of Cuyahoga County and declaring the necessity that this motion become immediately effective.
Welcome, Mr. Parks, and we'd like to give you an opportunity to give a brief opening statement, or any kind of opening statement regarding your qualifications, and I believe there are certain qualifications that are provided for in the charter for the position of treasurer, and once again, Ms. Schmutscher has those materials for review if anyone's interested, but we have verified that he does meet the statutory qualifications.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, esteemed members of council. It's my pleasure to have the opportunity to present to you my qualifications to be confirmed as the treasurer of Cuyahoga County. I'm going to start in ascending order, all the way back to when I was born in the city of East Cleveland, and went to school, and I am a lifelong resident of the Cuyahoga County. I went to Roselle Kirkenshaw Schools in East Cleveland, where I participated in the marching band, the legendary Shaw High Cardinal Marching Band. From there, I matriculated in Barton Wallace College, where I double majored in political science and business administration. I was active there. I was on the newspaper staff, student senator, and I was a special liaison to the president with the cultural students of Barton Wallace College, as well as a member of Omega Psi Phi fraternity. Following graduating from school at Barton Wallace, I spent five years in the banking industry, starting off in item processing, which is very relevant to the work that we do in the treasurer's office. That is the actual processing of the checks and applying them to the payments, and this is a function that we perform in treasury. Following that position, I went to the consumer credit division, again, very relevant. I have extensive collections experience from the banking industry, and that is one of the major functions of the treasury. So I believe that the learning that I did in the corporate world will improve the operations that we have from a collection standpoint in the Cuyahoga County. After working a few years, I decided that I want to slightly change my direction and position, and through my working, I saw a very attractive position called a controller. One of the things about controller, that was the chief accounting officer for a division or organization, so I decided to go back to school and pursue accounting in order to sit for the CPA exam. I went back to Cleveland State, took the applicable classes, and subsequently passed the CPA exam. But during the interim, I also started my own company, and a lot of the relevant experience will come from this very company that I started. It was called Markon Consulting. My name is Mark, my wife's name is Connie, and what we would do is we would go to small organizations and set up accounting systems, set up procedures manuals, HR manuals, and we would take small businesses from inception to successful organizations. I did that for a number of years while working, but why that is relevant is because that is where I got a great deal of my investment experience. In addition to the accounting, we also had an investment operation where I was licensed in securities. Actually, as you'll see on my resume, I have a Series 6 license in securities, which allows you to sell mutual funds and variable products. I had grown the business throughout the country, and one of the required requirements to do that is a Series 63. At one point, I had an investment license in Florida, Georgia, Louisiana, Michigan, Ohio, and Texas, and I had clients and representatives in all of those places. And I also got a 26 license because the scope of my business was so large that I was a principal, so I had the 26 which allowed, which allowed you to sell investments, as well as supervise those who sold investments. So I have a great deal of investment experience on the retail side from the business aspect. I sold thousands of investments to consumers. I literally have boxes of certificates and plaques from being a statewide produce, producing champion in the company in which I work for. I also have investment experience from working here at Cuyahoga County. I participated on the IAC work group. For those who are familiar with the Investment Advisory Committee that we have here, typically the people who have sat on that committee were not investment professionals, so the work group actually reviews the investment policies and the investments, and makes recommendations to the IAC. I participated on that committee for four years officially, and I participated unofficially, just as an attendant for the prior four years. So I'm very well informed about the investments that the county has. Also, with the medical bond rating, or I'm sorry, the bond offering, I participated in that. The largest bond offering in the history of Cuyahoga County, I sat on that bond offering team. So if you look at my career, you see that I understand investments from a retailer, which is producing and selling the investments, all the way to the creation of securities, which is the bond offering. Now, one of the companies that I worked for was very large, and basically, we just had to do the application and turn it in. But then I took a position with a, I placed my license with a company that was a municipal bond dealer, and they really didn't have retail. So in that business, I actually had to do the back office, which is setting up the deals with the retailers, getting the products, and negotiating the payment structures, as well as the front office, which was keeping compliance, keeping the securities log, training the staff. So I have a very, very large, encompassing understanding of investments. Following working at the banking industry, I was the CFO for Community United Head Start, which was a daycare organization, which had 32 sites, 225 employees, about 1,500 students, and in that environment, I was the CFO in charge of accounts, payables, receivables, payroll, and cash management. We had a significant-sized investment portfolio there that I was responsible for. Primarily, we did variable products and some fixed-type investments like CDs, et cetera. Leaving there, I went to the Cleveland Clinic Foundation as a senior accountant. And I bring this up, I think this is important, because I believe in this environment at Cuyahoga County, I'm kind of known as the person who gets things done. In my department, went and throughout the county, people call me when they want things to happen, I get it done. And a lot of this is attributed to my experience at the Cleveland Clinic. At the Cleveland Clinic, I worked as a, in a project management environment. There was an entrepreneurial organization within Cleveland Clinic called C5, Cleveland Clinic Cardiovascular Coordinating Center. And what this was, was a group of people, about 300 strong, who did clinical trials across the world. So for you to understand what a clinical trial is, when you have a new drug, you have to test it from the animal standpoint, and then you test it in people. Cleveland Clinic did this in large scale with people. And we would have hundreds of clinical trials, and there was project managers for each one of those trials. There was three finance people who had to work with each project manager, so at any given time, I might have 100 trials that I had to be on top of on point, because the nature of the protocol required that you had to make sure that you were reaching your critical paths, and that the billing and the payments were submitted so that the trial could run effectively, otherwise the research could be kicked out. So it was up to the project team to do that, and that is where I really learned how to be effective, manage large projects and multiple tasks, and many with a lot of things going on. And leaving Cleveland Clinic, I actually left there because at that point, my mother became terminal, and through the years, I had begun to grow this business. So as I mentioned, I had investment clients in multiple states. At this point, the company had become more of an accounting firm, because I had gotten my CPA, and my wife had children, and we kind of gravitated to the accounting arena. At that point, I had an office in Beechwood, downtown Cleveland, and Akron, as well as a startup in North Carolina. So we had built that business up large enough that I was recruited by the President's Council to participate in their leadership program. If you're not familiar with the President's Council, this is 15 to 20 African-American businesses who have the largest grossing businesses in the region. So their revenues go anywhere from some millions to 40, $50 million. So they looked at companies that were emerging, that had significant revenues, to bring them into their fold, and train them in marketing, strategic planning, and just different facets of leadership. So I just mention that because I think that leadership is a quality that's required in this position that I would like to be confirmed for. Leaving, after working my own business for a number of years, we had a couple of things that happened that kind of threw the business in a tail, excuse me, in a tailspin. We had 9/11, where the investment market was very difficult, because I spent a lot of time just keeping people in their investments, let alone selling them. So after a few months, I went back to working, having had my business full-time for two years, and I became the CFO at the Lake Metropolitan Housing Authority. Lake Metropolitan Housing Authority had a significant-sized investment portfolio, and the rate environment at that point was still a lot better than it is now, but their process was just investing in CDs and rolling them over, and their investment gains were not significant. I brought in a consultant and looked at our investment portfolio and had them work on it, and the revenues from our investment increased 55%. So it was a significant gain in the investments of that organization. So again, I point that out, because that's relevant to what we do in the treasury. So that's a little bit about my past, and I just want to talk to you briefly about my job here at the county over the last couple of years, and then I'll get into some things that we would like to do, given that I would be confirmed in the treasury. I started at Cuyahoga County as a budget analyst. I worked there for about four and a half years. I started in judicial, primary clients or agencies, being the prosecutor, juvenile court, justice affairs, the coroner, and court of appeals. Did that for a couple of years, and then I switched over to general government, where the primary agencies were auditor, recorder, commissioners, and the treasurer. So I actually have been familiar with the treasurer's budgets for many years, and I act as a technical support and advisor for the former deputy treasurer. During that process, there used to be a program called the Leadership Academy, where governmental employees from all different agencies would come together at Cleveland State, go through a year-long process, and learn leadership skills. One of the most valuable things that I got from that class, other than the training, was the relationships that were gained, because we had people from NEORSD, we had people from the library system, from CMHA, and just a multitude of different places. And a lot of times, people say that you definitely need a lawyer and attorney in your life, but I would certainly say that you need a librarian, because that is one of the most important people that I met in that situation. A lot of times, I have issues that come about, and I could call my librarian friends, and they could do that research. They got a staff of people who do it right away, so it's a great asset, so I just wanted to point that out. But as a result of that program, one of my proudest accomplishments was I was awarded, it's called the David C. Sweet Distinguished Elected Official Award, and that was because of my efforts into regionalism. And when I first walked into the Levin School, if you've ever been on the second floor, and you go up there and you see all those pictures of the people who have served this community at a very high level, when I first went up there, I said, wow, how did you get up there? You know, I was really amazed, and most of the faces I recognized, and it was just a quandary of, you know, how did you get up there? Well, when I won this award, one of the things that they did is they had a carousel in the Levin School, it was three of us who won this award, and my plaque spent on the carousel for a year under lights, and my name is now up there on Cleveland State's wall. So that's a very proud accomplishment for me. Leaving the budget analyst position, I became the financial system administrator, and part of that was administering the overall budget system for the entire county, training each agency, and being the help desk for that. The other part of that was the debt management, which is where the bond management and the bond sales came into place. I participated on the lending team for the MedMark, excuse me, a couple of refunding and bond deals in the 80 to $100 million range. So again, very familiar with the investment process. Leaving there, I went through another leadership program, so I think I got that leadership down pretty good. It's called Career Executive. Career Executive program was with HHS agencies, and they always had a finance person in that group. And part of that is you had a project coach, and then you had to do a project. So ironically, my project was how OBM, the treasurer, and general accounting could better communicate to maximize the flows of the money. So we were looking at how we could more closely match the budget to the liquidity in the treasury to make sure that we were maximizing the return on our investment. So that started off as my project, but during, halfway through that program, I was actually pulled to be the acting fiscal officer in the new government. And at that point, I was responsible for initiating, creating the fiscal office, which did not exist prior to this government. So what that entailed was bringing together three departments, OPD, OBM, and the clerk of the board, and four elected officials, treasurer, recorder, auditor, and clerk of courts. This was a very daunting challenge, given that I had no staff, I had no office, and I had to take all of my time, and I eventually developed the staff, developed an office, and started the creation of the fiscal office. And understand, with the elected officials, each one of those organizations had its own senior staff, own IT, own system, own finance, and all of that stuff had to be collapsed to get rid of the redundancies. And also, you had people who had worked in the same building for many years, many of whom didn't know each other, had no idea what each other did, and all of that had to be pulled together into what we now know as the fiscal office. So at the end of the leadership program, I basically documented creation of that fiscal office, and that was my project, and it went over very well. So if you ever go onto the site at Cleveland State, that's out there as well. Now, my position, we actually have three at this point, but is the Director of Special Projects, and part of that was being the county stat lead. County stat is our data-driven approach to decision-making, and in the fiscal office, I was the person who coordinated that for the fiscal office, and we have continuously had some of the best presentations that are given. I continue to be the organizational development person who helps to continue to develop the fiscal office. I serve as a deputy CFO in Wade Steen's absence. I am the signature, as well as the person who is in charge in his absence. We've worked on the disparity study, which just came out this week. We have a very high-quality RFP that will help us avoid some of the pitfalls that our colleagues across the street had, and then I served as the controller of the fiscal office. I also served interim internal auditor, and I'm currently the interim controller as well. So I was instrumental in getting the 2009, 2010 financials out, as well as pushing the 2011 and 2012. pushing the 2011 and 2012, and organizational realignment in the general accounting area. And as of December 17th, I believe, I became the acting treasurer as well. And part of mentioning that I'm a lifelong resident of Cuyahoga County is not to suggest that being that means I have more passion than someone who is not a lifetime resident. But it does speak to my concern and my caring about the taxpayers of this county when they come into our offices. If you recall, a few years ago, the lines in the Treasury were hours long. And one of the things that really touched home was one of my wife's diabetic aunts, who I knew had weak legs, was standing in that line. And I've heard, I've heard-
Wait, not one of your wives?
One of my wives.
How many wives you have?
She's probably laughing on screen, but I just have one.
Okay, no, it sounded like you said-
But it was one of my wife's aunts.
Oh, okay, it sounded like one of your wives.
Just one wife. That's enough.
That's why you need a job, you've got all these wives.
Yeah, yeah. So, back to the point. She was there in that very long line, and I felt that that was inappropriate. Some people have said, well, they should pay online and they could suffer in the line. But I don't feel that way. I think that these people literally pay our paychecks. So we need to service them the best we can, no matter what the situation. And I really feel that. So in this last, excuse me, collection, I monitored the line. The longest line, the longest wait was 22 minutes. So even the lines that went out the door and slightly around the corner, the people were getting in, and a 22-minute wait, which is pretty good for that. So even given all of the tasks that I've had to do, I've been effective in each and every one. So just to talk to you briefly about where I would like to go, given your confirmation, we've already started the strategic planning initiative in the treasurer's office to kind of really look at how we could improve the operations. One of the things that we're looking at is, from the investment standpoint, the engagement of our advisor. Over the years, we've had an advisor, which I don't think we've maximized the usage. And what is valuable about the advisors is they have a nationwide reach. They have resources that we don't have. And one of the weaknesses of our portfolio is the lack of diversity. In basic investments, everybody knows that diversification is part of an investment portfolio. If you're not taking advantage of that, you can be losing out, especially in this down bond market and the down rates in the fiscal, I'm sorry, the fixed investments that are out there. So we want to utilize that investment advisor a little more heavily. The other thing is on the collection side. Understand, no matter what we do from the investment advisor standpoint, it's not a lot of excitement in the investments. We're not going to make a ton of money in investments. So we're going to have to bring the money in from the collection side. And the treasurer's office at this point is approximately a decade behind in technology. So we have to get that up to where it needs to be. Now, one of the things about getting things done that I mentioned, the system in the Treasury is so bad that there's an agenda item at every meeting where we talk about how bad the system is. To me, that's ridiculous. So when I came in in December, I said, our priority is to get the RFP out for this tax management system. And I would like to report to you today that that RFP is completed and ready to go out the door in 90 days since I've taken this position. The other thing that we're looking at is something called autoagent. If you understand mortgage payments and tax payments, the majority of the tax payments come from the banks. We found an organization who will process that with 100% accuracy at no cost to us, and take away a large portion of that task and allow us to do other things. And that will improve our operation and utilize our staff a little better. The other thing is the opt-in bills. There was a contrived debacle when people were talking about the lateness of the bills, which was a non-issue. But nevertheless, we have put some things in place that will eliminate some of that. We want to do what you call opt-in billing. So what we would like to do is have our taxpayers opt-in to get their bills online. So the way the system works is when we created the tax bills back in December, once the process goes through, the bills, once they hit online, which is as soon as the calculations are done, we could have emailed all of those bills to those residents, and they would have got them a week earlier than they did through the mail. But what this also does is give us a connection as far as collecting the debts. If you understand, which I do very well, how debt collection works, the further away someone is from paying you, the less likely you are going to get paid. So if they've owed that debt for a year or five years, they're less likely to pay than someone who's only owed you for 30 days. So when we have a collection, there's always a situation where there are people who missed their payment. The next communication in our current system that they would get from the treasurer would be six months with the next bill. So if there was a misapplied payment, a lost envelope, a payment that they thought they made, the next notice they're going to get is they're on their way to foreclosure because they hadn't got knowledge of that. So that opt-in system will allow us to kick out an immediate notice that will say, hey, you missed your payment. And they might say, hey, wait a minute, I made that payment. And we could look it up, and we could take care of them. In addition to that online process, you may come into our building, and you see these people who are sitting there, waiting out in the hallway, and they're somewhat stuffed in that little room. That room is where people who are delinquent on their taxes come to make arrangements. Currently, what happens is they have to come downtown, wait, and sit with one of our agents, and figure out a repayment plan. Well, we've done some analysis and figured out that the average payment plan goes 24 months. So with that, we are going to put into effect an online application where people could just send in their information. We could develop the payment plan, send it back to them in an email. They complete the ID requirement, send a check with it, send it in. They don't have to come here. They have the payment plan, they're done. So the people who want to come downtown can do it, but those who don't, don't have to. And the other thing that we just want to improve our overall online applications. Lastly, in the new building, and hopefully in the current building, we would like to have a kiosk. A lot of people, say you work from 11:00 to 7:00 a.m., you get off, and you need to pay your tax bill. Do you really want to sit around for another hour and a half to wait for our building to open? Somebody say no. No. So we'll have a kiosk where a person could come up, and in the current plan, it would be in that lobby, like an ATM, where they could come in, make their payment, get a timestamped receipt that shows that they paid on time, and they could keep on going. That would be a 24-hour operation, and we could expand it for other court payments, CISA payments. We would also like to do it for border revision applications, and just a plethora of things that could go in that kiosk and ultimately serve our taxpayers better. So this is just a small sampling of some of the things that we would like to do in the Treasury, given my confirmation. So in closing, I think I've demonstrated that I have extensive investment experience, collection experience, certainly knowledge of finance, great management experience, and leadership qualities. So with that, I would humbly ask that you confirm me as the treasurer. And at this point, I will turn it over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. You've given us a very lengthy explanation. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Madam. Council President, one is just a comment. At the end of this week, the Land Reutilization Corporation, better known as Land Bank, will be meeting on the 22nd. I know you've got a very, a lot of stuff on your plate. I just wanted to encourage you to be there yourself whenever you can. They don't meet that often. And it's very important. And I think the kind of expertise that you bring to that board, because the treasurer sits on the board, would be very important. So just as someone who has an interest in that, our new representative in the Land Bank is Councilman Purnell Jones. And we just want to encourage you as a councilman, and as someone who has sat on that board for the last two years, that we, you know, really worked hard to try to bring in people with the professional skills to help that board make the best decisions possible. And it seems to me like you're one of those folks who could, you know, have, because of your area of expertise, a great deal to add. So I'd like to encourage you to be, to try to attend those. I know you can get someone to attend it for you, but it's just not, you know, it would be great if you could be there. That's a comment. You can respond, of course.
Okay. Through the chair to Councilman Brady. I've already read the packet, and I'll be there.
That's great. I'm very happy about that. The question is broader. Back in the 90s, you know, we had, as a longtime resident of Cuyahoga County, lifetime resident of Cuyahoga County, you'll remember the SAFE debacle, and how that program was lionized as a wonderful program and got a lot of positive publicity, only to turn out to be a, you know, a disaster. You've talked about your investment background and a little bit about investment policy. But could you tell us what you would do to, what kind of policies that you would implement or are implementing to prevent something like that from ever occurring again?
Well, the policy to the, through the chair to the Councilman Brady-
We nixed that, through the chair, and just answered the question.
Okay, Councilman Brady, first of all, the investment policy of the state of Ohio and the Ohio Revised Code is very limited. The investment policy of Cuyahoga County is even more so limited. And even with all of the understanding of complex investment instruments that I have, that's not going to happen for the most part. If most people can't understand it, it's not going to be something that we're going to do. My approach to investment is really to make sure that we do the research and the due diligence to make sure that the investments that we invest in are sound. And when I talk about diversification, I'm not talking about derivatives or anything like that. What I'm talking about is potentially, say, corporate paper, or some other type of investments that fit within the policy. But the only way that would happen would be through extensive credit analysis and data gathering to make sure that those investments made sense. So the former philosophy of some of the investment people was that we didn't want to take any risk. But when you talk about corporate paper, for instance, we invest over a very short horizon, anywhere from six months to a couple of years. When you look at corporations, chances are a corporation like Microsoft is not going to be out of business in the next six months to a year. So those are the sound type of investments that we would look at, nothing aggressive. And Councilman Sran, who is not here, came to our Investment Advisory Committee, and he thought it was boring. And that's exactly the way it should be, because we're just going to be slow and steady. And we're going to pick up some basis points here and there, but it's nothing aggressive that would be out of character for government.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, sorry.
Madam President, Mr. Parks, congratulations on your recommendation for appointment. You certainly have a wide and diverse background, which the county can benefit from. And you answered one of my questions in what Councilman Brady asked. But I would be interested in your thoughts as to if you were advising a private investor with a long-term time horizon. Stocks are in record territory and getting pretty high. Bonds are looking risky because if interest rates rise from their current low levels, there could be a considerable loss of principal. And cash is paying almost nothing. So how would you recommend to an investor to deal with this kind of environment?
Yeah, free advice. Councilman Miller, would you be speaking of an individual or a government?
I'm speaking of an individual. I'm presuming that a government would not be investing in equities.
Okay, the investment advice to an individual tends to be pretty much always the same. As I mentioned, diversification is always something that you should be doing. One of the challenges with individual investors is they tend to do it wrong. So right now, we are in a very high, the Dow Jones has been on a record high for a number of days. And people right now are saying, I'm going to get, I'm going to start investing. That's wrong. You're buying high. When 2008, about September, October, crisis, when the rubber hit the road and everything was going wrong, you had to get with investors to convince them to stay in their portfolios. But the reality is that they should have been buying at that point because you buy low and you sell high. People tend to do it differently. So with investors, first of all, we set out your goal and where you want to be, and we allocate your investments based on what your risk tolerance is, as well as suitability. And we just maintain that investment allocation throughout their investment life unless there's some type of change that makes them change that. So once I have sat down with a potential investor and determined what their tolerance is and what their suitability, the suitable investments are, we tend to stay on that path, even to the, even in the process of rebalancing. Say, one of your, say the stock market is up right now, and you're gaining quickly in that, and your stock portfolio, the equity is starting to break into some of the allocation that should have been fixed, we would rebalance that and keep you on the path. So that's typically the advice that I give to individuals.
By the way, I neglected to say that Ms. Simon is in attendance now. Any other questions?
Yes. Madam President, to Mr. Parks, besides the corporate paper that you mentioned, are there any new vehicles that you see the county is potentially investing in, or do you think it's pretty much status quo?
It's pretty much status quo. There are some things that have been suggested, a little additional, maybe funding of municipal bonds. Some of the large immunities like Westlake are starting to buy bonds from municipalities and getting a slightly higher rate of return. But as I mentioned, we would probably focus really on the collections. And then there's the potential that we could look at our liquidity, and maybe we have more money than we need in a liquid position, and maybe able to put that in a longer-term position and gain some basis points on that. So it's just a matter of analysis to determine if that's the right direction to go.
And Madam Chair, Mr. Parks, final question. Could you kind of give me an allocation of what the treasurer's office's primary responsibilities are? For example, what percentage of your time you would be dealing with investments? What percentage of your time you would be dealing with tax collections? And whatever other functions you have, how is your time distributed?
Well, I'll address the investments and the collections because they are primary, of primary concern. The investments, because cash management, the large amounts of cash that we have are ultimately very important. And the collections, because we want to collect as money as we can for the taxpayers, the schools, the libraries, et cetera. So just to give you an idea of how I prioritize that, from a functional design perspective, given that I'm confirmed, the cash manager, as well as the key collection person, will move into the administrative space so that they have to talk to me on a daily basis. We will see each other all day, every day. So really, I'd probably say those two items take up 40% and 40%, and the rest would be in the 20% range, or the rest of that 20%. So 40, 40, plus 20 for everything else.
Okay.
Ms. Camwell.
Mr. Parks, regarding your prepayment plan online, you stated, are signatures, will they be required? they be required?
Well, that one, the one that I mentioned was actually for delinquent contracts. And there is a process where the individual has to copy their, their driver's license and authenticate their signature in order to get into that program.
Okay. And then, right now, how many chances are provided taxpayers to get on the payment plan? Because I'm getting mixed information with that.
We say one.
We'll, we'll talk on that. Last one, you've worn several hats in the new government and made significant headway in all of them that you've, you've been in. Just curious, were you interested in the treasurer's position the first two years of the county government?
Well, that's interesting. When the first county, when the county governments initially started, because of the fact that I was the fiscal officer, I had an overarching understanding of the fiscal office, as well as being one of the few people who came from the county before. So I think that I was better utilized at that time, kind of developing the fiscal office to what it is today. At this point, I think we have a strong team, we have strong managements, and it'll give me an opportunity to really focus on and make a mark in one of the important areas of the, of the county. So I think it kind of worked out the way it should have.
And just to follow up on that, so will you continue to wear many hats, or once you're appointed, will you just be the treasurer?
How soon will I be appointed? That would determine the answer to that question. There is a controller, my understanding, that has been made an offer. And the other job that I currently have is posted. So given the confirmation, those jobs would be given to someone else.
And, and I know Mr. Jones has a question, but we talked about the number of jobs here. I know currently you're a member of the Orange City Council. Do you intend to, attempt to maintain that, or what are you going to do on that? Because Orange is in my district. I know you've served very well for a number of years on Orange City Council.
Well, Orange has some very exciting things coming up, and you'll hear about it, you heard it here first. But it is my understanding that there is a slight conflict and we will be, I will be moving away from that position. It just has not been totally timed out as to when that will happen. But it won't be a long-term situation.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, Mark, I'd just like to congratulate you on coming this far through the process and your appointment to the treasurer's position. Let me say, I have appreciated working with you over the last few years. I found you to be very professional and knowledgeable and couldn't be happier with this appointment. And like many of my colleagues, I'm concerned now because of our disparity study and the importance that it holds and the key role you have played in, in its development to this point. I'd like to know, as your responsibilities expand, what role do you see yourself playing on in the, in the disparity study? Will you be stepping back some, being as hands-on as you have been? How do you feel at this point?
Councilman Jones, I think one of my strengths is that I develop employees very well. I tend, as you know, to bring people who work with me to the meetings, they're in the discussions, they understand where I'm coming from and where I'm going. With the disparity study, the, the critical piece was getting out the RFP, which really defines what the consultant would do. So I will be on the team that will actually evaluate the people who apply for the study and will definitely be watching its progress as we go through. So I will not be stepping totally away from that, because as you know, I've done a lot of things in the past. And actually, at this point, I'll be doing a lot less, so that won't stress me at all. So I will be involved in that process.
And no further questions.
Rogers?
I don't really have a, a question, just a comment that, you know, I'm very pleased that you're, that you've been nominated to this position. As Councilman Jones said, that, you know, in our time of working together, you've been very professional. You've always been able to provide me with the information that I've needed. And I'm particularly excited to hear your, your interest in ensuring that Cuyahoga County is very friendly to our constituents and the customers that we serve. I think that we really need to improve our customer service at the county. And, and hearing that you want to continue moving in that direction is, is a pleasure to my ears. And I'm also excited to hear about these delinquent tax issues. This is something I get calls on all the time. I would say, most of the calls that I receive have something to do with, most of them have to deal with delinquent tax issues. So whatever we can do to get, help people get current in advance of them being foreclosed on is extremely important. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Greenspan?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. The, couple of questions, well, a couple, number one, you're, you're.
You know, Mr. Greenspan, you have a limit.
I know, I'm, I'm watching the clock, it hasn't moved. It's 300 minutes, I'm, I'm in good shape. The, the primary function of the treasurer is to, investment and collections, correct?
Correct.
And the investment side, Mr. Miller, pretty much hit on that. What's the county's position? I know you, you touched on eliminating lines and people coming down here and having online options. Insofar as our residents being able to make payments at remote locations throughout the county, whether it be at a banking location or, or other county facility, what, what are the current plans and what are your plans to expand that, if any?
Councilman Greenspan, currently, we have payment options at approximately five different banks. I can't name them off the top of my head, but some of the larger banks in the community. And there's also an option to go to our title offices. As far as planning into the future, I'm a data-driven person, and one of the things that I ask the staff for is how successful, is that, is that really being used? So given the numbers, which I have yet to analyze, I would make a decision on whether we should explain, expand it or, or just take it away and really focus on maybe online and the kiosk operations. So it's, it's under review, I'll say.
When, when you say five, five banks, is that five locations or just relationships with five different?
No, it's, it's like Key Bank, Fifth Third, it's the banks and all of their branches.
And all their branches, okay. The, and, and this, this won't persuade my vote in any way, but I, but I have to ask the question, because during the charter review process, the council, there was significant discussion regarding who the treasurer should report to. Should it report to the fiscal officer or report to the executive as the charter currently operate, mandates? How, what's your perspective on that? And once again, it doesn't, it doesn't, it shouldn't.
You have the right to remain silent.
Yeah.
Good exercise of that.
Well, no, as a CFO, I'm just curious for, these functions usually fall under a fiscal, Chief Financial Officer's responsibility, collections and investments. Our charter and state law mandates it's done differently. I'm just curious, having served many hats in the county, as being the interim fiscal officer and now confirmation for treasurer, what do you, what's your perspective on it? You probably have the most unique, objective position, so I'm just curious.
I would not like to speak outside of what the charter is, what currently is in place, which is the way the charter is set up, and speculate on how it, it may go. But the, the key to any financial operation is internal controls. So whether it be a treasurer that reports to the executive or one that reports to the fiscal officer, if the appropriate controls are not in place, it could function badly either way. Because as you understand, we had a government that was our predecessor that had separately elected people and all kinds of stuff went on. So it's really a matter of the controls that are in place and certainly the people who are in those positions. So I couldn't really speak to whether it's most effective either way, because corporations certainly do it where they have the CFO and the treasury tends to follow, fall under there. But governments have existed another methodology for a number of years. So I think they could be equally effective, just given the controls and the people who hold those positions.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, anything further in the questions? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. If there's no further comment or questions, do we have anyone that signed in for comment or available to make public comment? Mr. Boyle?
If I may, again, Madam President, members of council, on behalf of Executive Fitzgerald, again, I, I do think that, that Mark and his qualifications really make a, a true statement about where this government is as opposed to where it was. And if you think about it, and Councilman Brady referenced it in his comments, even before we had corruption, things like that, we certainly had numerous opportunities for inefficiencies and, and quite frankly, a lack of professionalism in, in, in some of the very major and important roles. And the SAFE crisis really illuminated that, and the lack of professionalism in the people that were doing the investments on behalf of the, of the county and the dire results that flowed from that. And I think that Mark, when you look at his background and the skillset that he has, really does present a, a really true picture of where we are now as opposed to where we were in the past. On a personal note, I knew Mark as my councilman before I knew him in the, in the county structure. And he's a responsive individual, just as, as Councilman Rogers, as you noted, his attention to the public is one that he certainly had as, as my councilman as well. There's been some things that he's done that haven't been brought out here that I think are important to all of us. You know, the, the leading role that he's played in, in not just our investment stuff, he's been involved in the land bank. When I first got here, I met with Mark and Robin and discussed some of the aspects of the land bank, the tax lien sales, things along those lines that are really important but are really kind of aspects that are in the weeds that people wouldn't know about. Bed tax legislation, another thing, to draft, potentially looking at some, some amendments and those things. And, and I do think that those are important to look at, to show the true picture of who Mark is. It's not just his licensure, it's not just his, his work here in the county, but, but also what he really brings to this table as opposed to what was here in the past. And I, and I, I do think that, that he will be an excellent addition to the, to the team.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, nor other comments, we entertain a motion to move this matter to the regular agenda.
They're moved.
Any discussion? All's in favor indicate, and they'll be under suspension, the rules for Wednesday, our second reading, Wednesday, the 27th. If there's no other discussion, all's in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Have it. All right, we'll see you on the 27th. Congratulations. And finally, item number 0011. I'm going to read the item, please.
Motion number 2013 0011, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of Andrea F. Rocco Esquire upon her taking the oath of office as the clerk of courts of Cuyahoga County and declaring the necessity that this motion become immediately effective.
Good afternoon, Ms. Rocco. I'd like to give you an opportunity to make a presentation regarding your qualification. We look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. It's somewhat shorter than the prior two. So I'll just begin by telling you that I am a practicing attorney, and I've been an attorney for now almost 20 years. I, I did not go right to law school from undergrad. For a couple of years in between, I worked in the city of Boston and I worked in my major, which was public relations journalism. And after a couple of years there, I moved back home. This is where my family is. My mom and dad lived here at the time, still do. And then I have three brothers, they're all here. And, and honestly, I just wanted to be closer to where my family was. So I moved back here and then I went to law school. I know you have the, my resume, so I wasn't going to spend time to, to go through that. I'd be happy to if you want me to. But you, you can look at the resume. I started out as a prosecutor, a county prosecutor. I then went to the Ohio Attorney General's Office, where I practiced primarily labor law. I argued cases in front of several appellate courts, wrote a Supreme Court brief, and argued cases in front of several different administrative boards, as well as Court of Appeals, and tried cases in federal court. After leaving the Ohio Attorney General's Office, I serve and still serve as the prosecutor for the city of Westlake. And I have been there now for a number of years. I always forget how long. Should I be confirmed, I would be leaving that, that post. And I, at the same time that I was working at the city, worked in the city of Lakewood. And then I started here at the county in October of 2011, I believe. During that time, prior, the time that I started here at the county, I worked on several different assignments. Some of those, if I can go through them quickly, have to do with the countywide sexual assault guidelines. That is a project that I coordinated with the director of the Cleveland Rape Crisis Center and the then-president of the Cuyahoga County Chiefs Association. We were able to put that group together and come up with a countywide guideline in a matter of four months. Why that is important is because it just wasn't different police chiefs from every single community. It was also all of the different people and agencies that are involved in a sexual assault. So it is our first responders. It was our dispatchers, our nurses, the people who are qualified and sane, as well as police officers. We also included our county social workers. As you know, many of them are the first to hear of a sexual assault, whether it is a child or an adult. So we had a very large group of people, and we somehow managed to all agree on a set of guidelines that I think is a very positive step for us countywide. In addition to spearheading that, I also was in, in charge of setting up the executives' heroin initiative. And I've been involved with the justice reform and the governing board, as well as the regional crime lab, and some side issues having to do with our CRIS collection. One of the things I did as still special counsel that directly is involved with this current position is the county's choice to try and collect on our delinquent court costs. As you know, this was a joint effort between the executive's office and your office. And this is something that I worked side by side with Trevor McAllier, and we worked along with fiscal and along with the current employees of the clerk's office. And that process, we had to know what the law said and then follow the law and then decide what kind of process would be followed. As you know, we decided to contract with the Ohio Attorney General as well as two third-party vendors. We followed our process as far as seeking qualifications on those third-party vendors. And I asked for an update. So far, just so you know, the attorney general has collected, this is as of yesterday, I believe, $265,000, almost $266,000. And the third-party vendors, who only just received the files, they have collected, one just received her files, she's collected about $1,600, and the other third-party vendor has collected $10,300. So this is money that would not have ever been collected had the two groups not joined forces to go after it. I also just wanted to point out that I am married. My husband and I have two children. We live in the city of Westlake. While residents of Westlake, we have been involved in our community, always very interested in public education. So we've been involved in several issues that affect our, our public school system in Westlake and statewide. And I served as a volunteer magistrate in our community youth diversion program. My two children attend the Westlake Public Schools. The different projects that I mentioned that I worked on as special counsel all seem to involve a, a large group of people. So I've had the opportunity to not only work with members of your staff and you individually, but also several different employees and directors throughout the county, some of whom are under the county executive, some are not. I will tell you that I've worked on several different issues with Sheriff Bova, and we have been able to succeed at many initiatives, as I did with Sheriff Reed. So if it's a, I'm going to move on to what, what I've done so far. I've been in this position since Jan. I've been in this position since January 1st. So our first working day was January 2nd of this year. And initially, I will tell you, I immediately set up meetings with each and every employee at the Clerk's Office. So we probably spent 15 to 20 minutes meeting with every single employee. And I wanted to introduce myself, get to know who they were, and I also wanted to ask them two questions. What can you suggest to make your job and what we do here more efficient and more professional? And what kind of issues have come up through the years that perhaps you think still need to be addressed? So I have a running log of all of those issues, some of which we've already resolved. And simultaneously, I was immediately just trying to improve the professional look of our office. I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to visit our, especially our civil division on the first floor in this building, but if you remember, in the public right-of-way, there must have been, I don't know, hundreds of boxes piled, some places seven foot high. These were office supplies. So we had office space in, on the first floor that only contained broken furniture and equipment. So I had that moved. We moved the office supplies into a room. There used to be all paper signs throughout the Clerk's Office. There's still a few remaining over in the old courthouse. But we went through with the trades, and the trades have been wonderful through this process, trying to address some of these physical concerns the employees have had. And we now have nice, professional-looking signs with clear window markers. So if you come in as a pro se defendant and you file something, and you're told, well, now you have to, if you want a certified copy, you have to go down to certified copies, that person can say you need to go to window 10. And you just look down, and you can clearly see a very large sign that says window 10. And there's not all of this confusion for our taxpayers who basically fund this office. So I got rid of all the paper signs. We now have professional-looking signs. All of the boxes that were in the public's right-of-way on the first floor have been removed. The, oh goodness, the rooms filled of just broken things have been removed, so that now the break room is almost clear for the people down on the first floor. In addition to the boxes that were just of office supplies, we had boxes of records. You might have heard this. They were on the basement floor of the old courthouse. We estimate there probably were 2,700 boxes. If you went down in the basement, you kind of had to trail in between them. Those hallways are large, it's a nice old building, but there was just thousands and thousands of files. Those, as best I could tell, had festered there for a number of years. And I'm very happy to report that with the joint effort of the trades, as well as the men and women who work over in the old courthouse, every single one of those boxes was moved by February 28th. Now, those boxes really is just the tip of the iceberg. The boxes represent a far deeper problem. The office has to follow a records retention schedule. While there was a records retention schedule, it just wasn't followed. So this issue is a multi-stepped one. We got rid of those boxes immediately, but we have to take care of the backlog. And the backlog goes several, several years. So we are in the process of trying to write an RFP that will handle our records retention issue countywide, since this is something you have addressed as you're getting ready to move into the new building. So part of the clerk's solution will be fed into that overall concept. The RC-2s, as I told you, were here, but they had not been updated. They did not comply with the rules that the Ohio Supreme Court has provided. Those RC-2s I have updated, and we have an upcoming public records meeting where hopefully they will be approved. While this is going on, we are going through each and every single cranny we can find in the old courthouse, as well as the Justice Center, and basically taking an inventory so that we can make the decision what needs to be scanned, what already is duplicate, which means we don't need to keep it anymore, what has some historical value, so that we can go through the process, and the person that makes that decision can then determine what she wants to do with that material. And then, final, as I told you, it was a multi-stepped approach. Finally, I'm going to look at, once we've taken care of this backup, we're going to keep on a schedule so that this never happens again. Why this is important is because the public has a right to those records. And right now, the process is not very efficient. And it will be much easier when all of these records are scanned and available on the computer, and we can have public terminals, and say you want to do your family history, you'd be able to come in and just look at, look that up, get a copy of whatever documents you were seeking. Right now, you may make that request, and one of the employees has to remember, where's that file? Is it in the warehouse? Is it stuck in that room located in the old courthouse? I've got to go get it. So that's all going to be, going to be taken care of. In addition to the housekeeping issues that I brought up already, much of my first couple of weeks was fixing things like making sure every single employee had a computer. Some of our employees did not have a computer, and they did not have a phone. We had these computers, and they were in boxes. So right now, every single employee has a computer, so that they can sign on to my HR, and that they, and they can receive policy changes or county information via the same systems that the rest of us have enjoyed since you all have been here. The bathrooms needed to be fixed, the, some of our documents that we give to the public were, just didn't make sense. They contradicted each other. And this confused the person that was getting the document, which then raised their patience with the employees in the Clerk's Office. So for instance, this is one of the issues that our cost department let me know. They said, people are confused. They get these two orders and they, or these two notices from our office, and they don't make sense, then they come in and they're very angry. So that's something we were able to fix immediately, just to clarify it. So a person that, for instance, is getting a summons, if he's been named as a defendant, he or she won't be confused as to, and having to make a second trip down to the Justice Center. That is, in fact, what has happened. That example leads me to the, one of the things that I would like to fix, should you decide that I get to hold on to this job, should you confirm me. I'd like to bring the office into the 21st century, and I'd like it to be an office where every single person, it's user-friendly. That means not only the defense bar, not only the attorneys that work in our system, but also the people who come down and represent themselves, the pro se defendants, as well as those people who might, who might have been charged with the misdemeanor offense. I would like those men and women to understand the process, and I would like it to, to be their first example of what our justice system is. And what the justice system should be is one that everybody understands what's happening, what the next step is, and they feel that it's a fair process, that they have been put on notice, that they haven't had to go through several different hoops to get the information they wanted. Part of that, bringing the office into the 21st century, is updating technology and updating the public's ability to see what, all the hard work that is done here in the Justice Center by our bench and the parties that practice in front of the bench. The, as you know, we have had a former employee indicted on criminal charges. So really, the first thing I did was request an internal audit. That internal audit has already begun. And I meet with the auditors every two weeks so that they can give me an update. And rather than wait until this audit is completed, I understand it's going to be several months, because there are a lot of issues in the office. They haven't really, we haven't looked at our procedures in a very long time. I meet with them every two weeks, and we decide then what needs to be changed. For instance, we have changed the way we count money at the end of the day, and the safeguards that a, you know, we have implemented, the safeguards that the auditor has recommended. These are recommendations that are statewide and uniform in the auditing business. So as, as they come across issues, we are addressing those and implementing the change in policies. The, the, I do want to point out that the collection of court costs that Trevor McElire and I worked on, it seemed that it took until I got there for the transfer of files to the third-party vendors to occur. So now that I'm there, every first of the month, the third-party vendor, as well as the AG, gets an updated files of cases that they can begin collecting on. The, another issue that's connected to that is, we used to send seven to nine invoices to people, and we have reduced that number to follow the standard procedure. People are given three notices, they're given 30 days in between, and that has cut down on postage and has given people an opportunity to know, oh, this is my last one, let me get in there and pay it, or let me call in and pay it. And we have seen an increase in people immediately paying those court costs with the, with the abbreviated version, the legally abbreviated version. So that has helped us collect the court costs. The other issues that have come up, I, again, am just touching upon kind of practical ones. The office did not have an overall professional look. For instance, up on the second floor, folks kept running into the glass doors. One gentleman apparently broke his nose. Little kids would run into it and get injured. The employees had taken and put seasonal decals all over the door to try and make people realize it's a glass door. And we removed those, and we now have a uniform line as, that follows what the Justice Center has in other areas of the building. So overall, the office is on its way to looking as an example of what you, you want the county to represent. There are going to be many other initiatives as we move forward. I think I've given you an idea that it was a bit surprising to come in and have to take care of moving office supplies out of the public right-of-way into a place that's not in the public right-of-way, or getting people computers that were still in boxes. We have, one of the things I know, just as an attorney, is that there's an awful lot of back and forth between the old courthouse and the Justice Center. We see a lot of traffic for folks who are trying to get a TPO from domestic relations. They would have to begin in DR, come over to us, and make that trip two times each way. In addition, when you get your notary license, you have to make the trip two times. So after speaking with Judge Pelos, who is the administrative judge now, it came up, and she had said, I've always wanted to have a, some clerks right here in this building. So we have already moved forward with that. They found us a space, we're trying to clean out the space, and determined what exactly needs to be done to make that happen. This is going to be a great, a great move, because the, primarily women who are trying to get a protective order will not have to do the back and forth so many times. They can stay right in the building. And we also are working with Sheriff Bova on trying to clean up the process so that, you know, that Clerk's Office hopefully will stay open a little longer, because oftentimes the judges and the magistrates are just signing a TPO, and it's, it could be 4:45. So we're going to try and stay open as long as the judge or the magistrate is there, so that there isn't this lapse in time between the, having that TPO filed. I've already gone over to the old warehouse where we keep furniture to try and find used furniture, that, you know, and that's marked, and there's just a couple other things that need to be done before our clerks are over in the old courthouse up and running. So it's going to be five to six clerks, as well as two notary people. So all of the business that is done in the old courthouse will actually be in the old courthouse, and that'll make it better for the taxpayer. I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Questions? Mr. Miller?
Madam President, Ms. Rocco, I'd like to congratulate you on your recommendation for appointment, and also thank you for your assistance to the county in your previous position. And my question is that, given where the Clerk's Office is now and the history, it seems like there would be two qualities particularly needed, which would be experience in implementing large-scale technological improvements, and secondly, administrative experience with large organizations. And my question is as to what experience you have in either of those, either of those or both areas?
Well, I can tell you that at the city of Westlake, we still exchange discovery and all other evidence exchanges through the old way. We, the attorney would have to mail it, and then we'd mail our response back, then they'd have to come in. When I got in there, we quickly initiated email discovery, so that attorneys and just taxpayers, because sometimes people want a copy of their accident report, they can just send that request electronically. We reduce everything, and it is sent to them via email. The only thing we have left to do is to make, what we'd like, what I'd like to do, if I was still going to be there, is our cruiser videos. I would like to somehow be able to create a file for that and also exchange that electronically. We have an antiquated system there, our computer system, and we haven't been able to do that yet. But that, we have brought up to speed, as much as we can, all of our processes that I have had to handle as the city prosecutor. In addition, as far as administrative duties, many of the projects that I went through in the beginning, sir, why I pointed those out is because what it takes in order to succeed, to actually have an end product, when you're working with so many different personalities, and oftentimes you're working with people who may have different agendas, is that you have to have the ability to try and keep them focused on the end product. So you have to find a way to work with all the different personalities and motivate them to reach that end result. And I've done that here at the county with many of the projects that I went through with this committee in the beginning. As far as my prosecutor duties, I have, while I certainly don't have the ability to hire or fire the police officers that I work with, in order to have a successful department, you have to, you have to have the ability to communicate, again, with people who often bring to the table different, different ways of looking at, at the same issue. So you have to teach them that if they did something incorrectly, you have to help them understand what the law is and why it's important that, that they follow it correctly, and that they communicate with whomever they're speaking to. In order to do that, I normally hold quarterly updates with each shift, so that they're updated on the law and that we can address whatever issues may arise. And we have done things so that it's not only my detective bureau that understands how to write and seek a search warrant, but every single one of the officers knows what is needed in order to put together a search warrant, and the kind of facts that they have to have before they go in front of a- to have before they go in front of a, in front of a judge. We also talk about the need to remember that oftentimes our officers, we come across people and normally, 364 days of the year, they're perfectly, they're great, but we catch them on their worst day, and we can learn from those, those situations. So through the years, I, we've taken the steps so that we're constantly learning and pushing ourselves to be better at that job.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, I do have one question.
Okay.
The records that you moved, where did you move them to?
Well, everything with records depends on the year, and so some of the files we immediately sent over to our in-house imaging that we have at the county. They could only take about 1,200 boxes. So we have the most immediate there, those 1,200 boxes. Then we have a warehouse, Judge, and the warehouse is very big, so we have moved everything to the warehouse pending going to our in-house imaging department. And once we decide and get approval as to how we're going to take care of the backlog, then that will be moved out accordingly to our RC2, our records retention schedule, and the law. Some documents we'll have to keep forever, and of course, we're going to do that. We're going to image those, and then we'll have backup in an underground area.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone sign in for public comment?
Yes.
Judge First, come on.
Madam President, members of council, thank you for the time to make public comment on Ms. Rocco's appointment. There is no doubt she is an energetic, delightful, hard-working individual who primarily has been working as the arm of the executive branch here. I'm here to make my record. Obviously, you know, council and the executive are well aware of the court's position with respect to the clerk in general. And the clerk is not a check on the court or an arm of the legislative or executive branch. It's vested with no discretion. It's only the arm of the court issuing its process, entering its judgment, and the clerk's functions, as you know, are set forth in Chapter 23 of the Revised Code, so the duties of the clerk. And the court records are governed by these rules of superintendence issued by the Ohio Supreme Court. 230326 of the Revised Code provides that the clerk shall exercise the powers conferred and perform the duties required by statute and common law, and in the performance shall be under the direction of the court. Now, with respect to the process for this selection, I would like to make the record that the courts served by this clerk were asked to be included but were denied any and all input in the selection process. So her suitability is really an unknown for us, and whether the, whether or not she will work under the direction of the court, certainly the, you know, what she's told us today. In fact, I'm, I'm kind of happy to hear the boxes were moved and Judge Palos's project is taken seriously because we asked her to do that on January 19th in a meeting of the three courts. So we're glad to see that's moving along. In doing our due diligence, I was somewhat concerned here, it should be note, and it should be noted, that the Charter Review Commission hearing testimony at which Ms. Rocco appeared and the public record request about the postings, interview process, individuals interviewed, the pay scales, any potential conflict, there were concerns about the, she's serving in this position as an assistant prosecutor, I believe there's an inherent conflict there, were requested by the court last week. The testimony of Ms. Rocco was just posted this morning, leaving us no time to listen, and documents began appearing at about 12:30 this afternoon, leaving no time for review. So I'm hoping that the delay was not purposeful in providing that information, but you can expect that I, you can appreciate my concern. In any event, the court hereby expresses its reservations for the clerk appointment. I am assuming that it will move forward here, and we will look forward to tomorrow, working on e-filing. But I do need to make my record and appreciate your time.
Thank you very, very much, Judge First.
Okay.
No, Judge.
Judge, Judge, I'm sorry.
Your testimony seems to indicate that you have a concern with Ms. Rocco. Be specific.
Well, the concern is whether or not she will be serving as a, an arm of the executive branch of government in the service of the court, or whether she will be serving as a, under the direction of the court. I don't know that.
But you do acknowledge the great improvement of the clerk's office?
Oh, absolutely, yes. And that was discussed January 19th, the three courts, you know, there's no, no doubt. We, you know, need to beef things up, and we look forward to the e-filing, which we have now, you know, established the temporary rules. We expect those to be passed by the bench next month so we can get that project well underway. I would, I would just remark that there, not only are there files in the courthouse, but there's files over in the foreclosure department, so she'll have more to do.
Well, I anticipate anybody that this group confirms is going to, is going to follow the letter of the law and the charter as is specified right now, and I don't see any problem, as a matter of fact, considering what we were dealing with. And this is the second hearing we've had on the clerk of courts. In the first one, I'm embarrassed to say I was part of it and didn't see what was coming and probably should have, and having seen what we have here and what we had there, I'm greatly appreciative of someone like Mrs. Rocco to come in here and to lay herself and her career on the line for, for such a dastardly duty. And it is a dastardly duty to clean this thing up, and I, I look forward to her cleaning up that, that office as best she can in accordance with the charter and working hand-in-hand with, with the court and not necessarily the executive.
And the question is, to what extent does the charter reach in? Her directive, what is her directive? Is the, is the question, and it's a systemic, it's a structural problem that the charter, and I, we've been over this many times before.
Probably a good question for another day, but this is about Mrs. Rocco.
That's correct.
And, and I see nothing but bright things.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, Judge, all right. Thank you very much, Judge First.
All right.
Yes, Mr. Boyle?
Thank you, Madam President and members of council. I could hazard a guess here that I've known Andrea Rocco for probably longer than anybody in this room, and, and I'll be frank, the, the skillset that she has, that she has brought to, to the, to the several months that she's been on the job, are the same traits that, that she has carried with her throughout the entire two decades that I've known her. She's zealous, she's, she's smart, she has a stick-to-it of nature. Those type of skills are the skills that I'm positive that Executive Fitzgerald saw in her when he brought her in in Lakewood, as well as here in Cuyahoga County, and that she has already shown are well-suited to the task, the Herculean task, quite frankly, that the clerk's office has to, has to deal with. With that in mind, I, I want to add just a couple of things. One is a, is a personal comment that when, when Ms. Rocco was appointed, or interim-appointed to the, to the position, I was walking over to her office, bringing over some in-office mail or some other stuff that was coming to her old spot, and that's when I walked in and I saw that they were painting the blue line on the window up at the glass enclosure by the filing up there, and I didn't give it much thought, and, and Ms. Rocco referenced it here. But, but the reason that it struck me was that the issue of, of people walking into the glass enclosure there was not one that started on January 19th, it was one that had been there for quite some time, and for whatever reason, nobody thought it was necessary to deal with. And that's really telling, to think that, that, that people walked by that all the time and had no dealings with it. And then the one week that Ms. Rocco was there, knew that this was A, a legal hazard, and B, just a stupid idea to not have it addressed. And that shows in my mind what I think she's capable of doing in cleaning up the mess and what she's already doing. The boxes being moved have been addressed ad infinitum, I mean, they've been dressed here for, for, forever, but it's really important. It's important to the court, it's important to the citizens, and it's important to the people who maintain the records. And it had been, it had been ignored for years, and Ms. Rocco has dove right into that and, and quite frankly, has either resolved it or is in the process of resolving it. That's what I think she brings to the table here. The issues that I think the clerk of courts faced and is still currently facing really are twofold. One is leadership and one is management. And, and, and those are the skills that I think that she has shown in the time that she's been here. She is absolutely up to the challenge of, of leading this office. I'm going to make a reference here that will lead back, as all roads always do, to Mr. Jones's district. One of the things that, that really amazes any of us who practice law in this county is the fact that you cannot file online. It is absolutely ridiculous to think that in 2013, we're still not doing, we're still talking about how we're going to do it. The federal courts have had it for, I don't, Majid, how lo, it's been well over a decade.
I can, I can tell you from personal experience, in the state of Arizona, about 13 years ago, not only could you file online, but you can link inside the document to a deposition and view the, the video deposition, and in federal court, and here it's been at least since 2000. And I've personally actually had a bad experience just last week, where we're trying to get copies of documents that were filed in court, and we couldn't do it because it's not online. You called the clerk's office, the files are in the judge's chambers, you're in the middle of litigation with the court, you don't want to make communications with the court, you know, even though it's procedural and it's a mess. It's something, well, I urge council to actually hold regular meetings here to, to check the updates on electronic filing, to make sure that that project, that is a, the major, if you talk to any practicing attorney, that's the major complaint, and it's been there at least since the year 2003, 2004.
The issue, though, that, that struck me was not that Cuyahoga County wasn't doing it, but that we didn't really even have a plan of how we were going to even think about implementing it. And that plan is now in place. And as I referenced, all roads lead to Garfield. Garfield Heights Municipal Court, you can file online. Garfield Heights Municipal Court, and yet we can't here in the largest county in the state.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Boyle. We, we appreciate your comments, but we're not here to bash Mr. First. Mr. First was a dedicated public servant for many years. I know he was behind in some things, but I don't think that we need to spend time bashing the past administration.
And I apologize, and if I could just, because I did want to clarify, and I apologize if that was the implication. My comments were more, and, and if they were not solely geared to these comments, I apologize both to Mr. First, who I've known for three decades. But I was commenting more on the fact that we do now have that plan in place, and I was commenting.
We look forward to working, we're working with Ms. Rocco, and we understand she has some very progressive ideas. I believe Mr. Magenti wanted to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Your Honor. Council persons, I appreciate the opportunity to see you again a, a second time in one day. Some people would consider that cruel and unusual punishment. I, I hope you don't. This summer, I had the opportunity to take a busman's holiday to New York City, and I was looking at the criminal justice system, and I've been there before and looked at other criminal justice systems, and, and they turned theirs around, and they turned their city around. It was an essential part of their reformation in their, in, in New York City, was the reform and, and public confidence building in the criminal justice system. Public confidence was built because it became an effective system. There, the leaders of the criminal justice system are the clerks of the five boroughs. It is amazing what the clerks have done. We come from a different culture here in Cuyahoga County, where we've had a, the clerk traditionally has been a more passive and role, where they simply enter judgments and, 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 you know, do the normal work you would expect of a clerk in this county. In, in New York and other counties, the clerk is a leader. The clerk is a leader of the criminal justice system. They, they have saved millions, they are the experts in the justice system reform, they time all aspects of criminal justice. In, in New York City, the individuals come to their first court appearance in 20 or 22 hours in all five boroughs, including the Bronx and, 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 and the other four, with an attorney, with their charges, with discovery, and they efficiently move their cases through. There are expectations, they time the people in jail. The clerk does this. It is, it's not a passive group. They are active in the revenue collection. I have been extremely impressed by Clerk Rocco and her involvement in the criminal justice reform program as special counsel. We've dealt with her for, since Mr. Fitzgerald took office. There is a opportunity to greatly improve the revenue efficiencies and implement best practices in the criminal justice system. She has been a active partner. With her help, this criminal justice system and leadership will become a more efficient, transparent, accountable operation. The, she, the clerk is the person who should be creating the performance statistics, measure the objectives, look at, we, we've had corruption issues with the clerk's office. There has been absolutely no accountability whatsoever regarding large issues, including in the revenues, for an example, the bond forfeitures, we're taking multiple millions of dollars of potential revenue that we are owed that has not been collected over the years. The, I predict with confidence that with the determination and spirit of accountability she will create, that the criminal justice system in Cuyahoga County will improve under the leadership of Andrea Rocco as your county clerk. The Supreme Court of Ohio has noted that the clerk performs both a function to the court and executive. A clerk should not be simply recording and forgetting, a clerk should be an active part of the leadership, an active role. The, she will employ best practices, save this county millions versus transparency and the efficiency that will result in the public confidence we all seek. I think you could not have found a better clerk than Mrs. Rocco. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Magenti.
Thank you.
Mr. Jemanna?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just say, as to the, the question of the charter, I mean, we really didn't have a lot of choice in the charter. It was presented, we approved it. So that, that's a discussion for another day. I, I think what's important here is with what I've heard from the nominee, we had a situation where we have fresh eyes, somebody that was not in that department, and I think that that's serving this county well because there's a fresh look at this. I'm a little bit disappointed that there may not have been as much communication between the, the judges as to setting up parameters and, and so on, and recommendations, but, you know, I'm, I'm pretty impressed in, in what I've heard, and I, I think that even what I've heard since her testimony about us making a commitment to helping move along the, the technology is something that we all need to get behind. Because in so many different areas, what we do in Cuyahoga County, we hold out and are proud of being the, the best in the state, and, and I, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to, to say that about the clerk of courts office.
Thank you, Mr. Jemanna. And, and Ms. Rocco, upon confirmation, we assume this will go forward, that we'd like to be officially notified of your resignation as a position of prosecutor, because I do believe that is a conflict. Okay. All right, anything further? If not, we'll entertain a motion to move this to the regular agenda for adoption or suspension of the rules.
Second.
Move in a second, any discussion? All's in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations to our three nominees. Wait, wait, don't leave, real quick, real quick. We have an item that we, that, that Ms. Tewan and Mr. McLough talked to us about today. You know, on the 27th, we have a fairly long agenda. We, some of it, most of us will be here on, it's nine o'clock in the morning for the seminar on public records, and then we have some committee meetings, we have a meeting at 5:00. And it was proposed that we, and we will have a brief executive session on a labor matter, but it was discussed that, was proposed that we would have at that time a discussion of the sale of, of certain real estate properties. And I will just want to let you know that we, that will be too long of a day, we cannot do that, we are not going to be rushed into any decision. We've asked you for information, but these are very, very vital issues. We've asked you for information, but these are very, very vital issues that we have to discuss, particularly about the archives and record storage. And you've got to give us enough time so that we can be fresh and consider these matters with all of the information available, all right? So I will get together with Ms. Schmattzer and Ms. Tewan to discuss these real estate matters because frankly, I'm tired of getting something five minutes before and having to make a decision, and I'm not going to let the council do this. I'm not going to let the council this position, all right?
That's fine. Just a point of clarity, nobody was asking, it wasn't for any...
Well, I was called and told that we're going to have to make a decision after a long day, and that's, it's just too long. It's not fair to us because it's a very, very violent decisions that we have to make.
Just a point of clarification, this was not, nobody's asking for any decisions or anything. This was to update council on status so that something can be put on the agenda, and then once it's put on the agenda, to go through the normal process. This was a hesitation, this was not putting any recommendation in front of council for a vote on any property. This was to give you an update on the remainder of the...
We're not going to take an update at 7:00 at night since we've been here at 9:00 in the morning.
And that's why we're trying to check whether there's availability or not, that nobody's...
Okay, all right. Anything, you're going to win this one, Majid. Any other, any other items for the good of the council? If not, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.